Thirty seconds.
Thirty seconds.
I don't want to miss a thing. Hold the lead to order and we will begin with our opening invocation.
Holy and gracious God of the moment, throughout all history and eternity, we thank you that on planet Earth and in this universe, that this place right here in the Staples City Council chambers is an important part of your world. We thank you for those who come to our town and serve. We thank you for your wisdom, which when sought brings life. And we thank you for decency and order. And thank you that we can know that in your Emmanuel presence, that you are always with us. Through the tough times, through the easy times, mountain tops and valleys and everything in between. Your track record is perfect. And we ask this all in the name above all names, Jesus, amen.
With the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. And we'll go ahead and move on to our next item, which is to approve tonight's agenda.
So moved.
Second, motion by John, second by Mary. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Takes us to the next item, which is to approve the consent calendar, which is the minutes from our July, our July 9th meeting and our payment of bills.
So moved.
Motion by John, second by Mary Jo. Any discussion? Hearing now, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That carries. Move on to the presentation of the 2023 audit and financial statements by Dean Bergman, CPA, for Carlson Esq.
All right, well, thank you, Mayor. Good to be here this evening to run through the 2023 audit. It looks like you guys have a full evening, so I probably think it's 80 or 90 pages, so I promise I won't go through every page unless you want me to, so. But if you, if you guys do have the audit report, I'll just, I'm gonna cite some pages and we'll just kinda run through the pages and just do it that way. So if you guys want to turn to page one, page one is the independent auditor's report. And this is, once we get done with the audit, all of our steps, all of our procedures, we have to give an opinion on the financial statements. And there's a group in the middle, it's a summary of opinions. And that's our opinion on all of the financial statements. And unmodified is, that would be the clean opinion, the best opinion we can give. And there's one item there that's a qualified opinion. And that opinion for the governmental activities is qualified. It's because Fire Relief Association does not have an actuarial valuation to have the report. The city report in full accordance with generally accepted accounting principles, the Relief Association would need to have an actuarial valuation. And, and in our world, it's not uncommon for cities not to have those evaluations. Tends to be a cost benefit, cost benefit analysis. And, and it's just very common to, to not have that evaluation, so. Okay, the next part of the report, we're not gonna spend a lot of time on, on the financial information. There's a lot of, a lot of numbers in the report and a lot of financial information. And, but just, I guess on the financial part, instead of looking at the actual audit report, just to, you know, let the council know that the city fund balances are, are generally in very good, very good shape, in very good position. And, and in looking at some of the barometers that, you know, that the measurements to compare, say your general fund, fund balance, the city's, city's funds are actually, are in really good shape and, and compare well to those recommended, recommended levels, so. So, well, with, with that, we're gonna jump toward the end of the report here. We're gonna move to, let me get my page here. If you guys wanna look to page, way toward the end of the report, on page 83. As part of the audit, we look at the city's internal controls. And we do have a couple items related to internal controls. And the first one on page 83, it's, it's a segregation of duties finding. And, and this is, this would be related to the, just having segregation of duties for each transaction that the city transacts. It's ideally, the city would have two sets of eyes on every transaction that's, that's handled. And for the most part, the city does have a really good segregation of duties, but that barometer is an ideal segregation of duties that, for every transaction to have that, you know, second set of eyes on it. And, and in our world, it's a very, very common finding to have this lack of segregation of duties. And it's really a cost benefit issue if the city were to, to have that two set of eyes on every transaction, the cost benefit is really not, not particularly good. But again, the city has really good internal controls and, but with that ideal segregation of duty, we are required to, to report this as a finding.
Does the councils reviewing and signing off on, on the bills and those transactions, does that count toward it, or it has to be an employee that has to look at it?
No, it, it would count for that. No, it's a good question and a good point. And again, the city has really good internal controls. All the reports that the council reviews, you know, at the meetings, before the meetings, that's all just very good internal controls. But, but would, could the city include council in segregating some of their regular daily duties? I think the answer is yes, you know, if that would help to segregate.
If you have two council members that review every bill or statement prior to the meetings and sign off on them, so I didn't know if that is part of it or not.
Yeah, I think the example that I use quite often when I talk about these internal controls is the person who gets the mail, the person that opens the mail, the person that makes a deposit, the person who records the activity into the books, the person that keeps track of the accounts receivable, the accounts payable, ideally, that's a separate person for all of those duties. And again, I think the city has really good internal controls and, but I think, again, that barometer is just that ideal segregation of duties for, for all those separate duties, so. But it's a good, good point and good question, so. Okay, if you guys want to turn to page 84, this would be a second finding. And this has to do with preparation of the financial statements and basically the report. And we as auditors prepare the, prepare the report and the footnotes, the, the entire packet. And when we do that, we have to have controls in place to make sure that we stay independent. And what we do is we pass along this draft report to, to Tara and her department. And they get a chance to look at it and approve it. And if there's changes, you know, we'll make those changes. And then, then after that, they, the management signs a representation letter and then the report can be finalized after that. So we have measures in place to help us make sure that we stay independent, so. Third item here on page 85 is, it's material audit adjustments. And that has to do with some of the adjustments we make for, for some of the financial statements. Some of those adjustments exceed what's considered material. And that's a calculation that we do as part of our, part of our audit, so. And if they do exceed that, we have to include that in the report, so. Okay, that takes a quick run through the report. There's also a separately issued letter. It's called the Communication with Those Charged, To Those Charged with Governance. And there's just a handful of items on there. I'm not gonna go through all of them tonight. I know you guys have a full book here. But every one of those items is, is really, for the most part, standard, standard operating. And there's no, nothing additional really to report, other than, you know, the city has, you know, all those items are really, for lack, lack of a better way to put it, the city is in compliance with, with all that, so. So that's a quick run through the 2023 audit. And with that, if, well, first of all, I'd just like to say Tara and her team do a, do a really good job and, you know, makes the audit go very well for us. And, and that's, that's, that's a really, really a good thing, so. With that, if city, if there's any questions about the audit financials, I'd be happy to take any questions.
If I have any questions at all? Doesn't appear so, thanks very much.
You bet. Thank you.
Thank you.
Before we move on to the next item on the agenda, I'd like to have Chief Larson go ahead and do some introductions for us.
Hello, everybody. We are in a really unique situation at the police department where we have three new officers that have just started with us. We're very happy to have them. And we wanted to introduce them to you guys tonight, so you're familiar with their names and faces. And we had Ron Case's retirement and we had an officer go to the DNR and another officer go to another agency. So we had vacancies to fill. And in this job market, we were extremely lucky to get three great people, so. If you guys wanna come up. So Jeff might be a familiar face to some of you. He's been with Wadena County Sheriff's Office prior to coming with us. And he's been working part-time with us for quite a while. And great guy. Chase Reed came to us from Walkerpedee and previously from Pillager. Lives in town and is doing a great job. And Dawson Walvogel, he just finished school and is picking up the job really well, really fast, and doing a great job. And again, we're just really happy to have him. It's a variety of talents and skills and interests. And it's kind of a refreshing breath of fresh air to have new faces and new ideas and, you know, try to teach an old dog new tricks maybe, but they're doing great and I'm happy to have them. And we've got a really good, good solid team. So I don't know if anybody has questions for them or anything, but really happy to have them here.
Really glad to have you guys.
Thank you.
Welcome to Staples.
It's always great when we can have the really good news that we aren't searching and, and poor Chief is tearing her hair out trying to fill the schedules. So welcome, thank you for coming to Staples.
Awesome. All right. What we'll do next here is we'll consider accepting the 2023 audit and financial statement as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Roy, second by Mary. Is there any discussion? Hearing now, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried.
I always think when we have a, the size of the government that we have here, that seems ridiculous to get dinged every single year on separation of duties.
As long as I've been around, that's been in there.
I know, and you would think that they would make allowances for your, your size of your town and, you know.
But does it, does it affect, does it affect it in any way? So it's more just a note than it is anything?
Yeah, no, I mean, it doesn't really have any material impact. But what, I think what Dean was pointing out is you're being compared to the ideal situation. You know, if money were no object, staff were no object, you know, how can you ensure, you know, that there's no room, wiggle room for any kind of mischief?
I'd love to know how many cities don't have that.
Like I say, if you, if you wanna look at, you go to the state auditor's website and look at audit reports, guarantee almost all of them.
All right. Next on the agenda will be to consider approval for the Railroad Days.
Thank you, Mayor, city council, city staff. It's that time of year again, I'm back. The only time I come to pester you. If you have not blocked my number by now, I would not fault you if you do it right now. Nothing crazy, I guess the theme this year is here we grow again. We're, we're trying our best. Renee is tired, I'm tired, but here we go, we're, we're rocking and rolling again. You have your pack, in your packet, you have our city requests on behalf of Discover Staples and the Staples Chamber and a little bit of everybody here to make this happen. We have a few changes to the parade route. We're gonna get closer to Lakewood Manor again. We're also bringing back the 5K, so we'll be utilizing that multiple times. Women of Today Car Show will be moving downtown with us now, so that's gonna help expand. So when you look at our, our requests here, we have asked to close down some more roads than we have in the past. I have had the chance to meet with just about everyone except for Scott. Scott is tomorrow, just to kinda cover all the bases, to make sure everything's good from the public safety side to utilities to just the general flow of the day and things we might need. I also have a proposed schedule that I can give out to you at the end. We are still finalizing a few things, believe it or not, people don't get their information in on time. So we're expecting a good crowd. We're also expecting 70 degree with a slight breeze and overcast skies, so. Please, please work on that if you have any others to do that, too. I won't go through this line item by line item unless you'd like me to. If anyone has any questions about things, I'm happy to answer those. A street dance is being held at Lefty's this year. I have been working with Lakewood Manor already, so we've had meetings with them. The stage will hopefully be right in front of the congregational church facing Highway 10, so that sound shouldn't be an issue. Again, we've been in communication with the Manor folks already and they understand that it's a one night thing and that we will do our best to mitigate that. They also have our cell phone numbers and Leo's cell phone number as well, so if there's any issues, they'll be taken care of immediately. Other than that, any questions from anyone? The Ferris wheel is on hold until 2025. So close, so close. Fundraising has also been great. We've, we've been able to cover all of our costs, so we're very happy for that and thankful for the support of the community. She's thinking it'll be close to 50, so we're real excited. So we'll see what, we'll see what ends up showing up. They get a lot of registrations the day of, so it's, it's hard to know exactly what's going to happen, so.
We talked this morning, department head meeting, we'll round up every Conan barricades in Todd, NY, Wadena County.
No questions at all?
No, I know they've been working hard on this, appreciate that.
Yeah, of course, Jordan.
I should mention, actually, Discover Staples is now coordinating Railroad Days. So the chamber is kinda helping in the background with some publicity stuff, but for the majority of it, we have moved over to Discover Staples. Since we can use some of the lodging money for that and we're able to get grants a little easier than trying to go through the chamber, which is a 511(c)(6), so. I should have mentioned that.
Right. Move on to the next item of business, which is to consider scheduling a public hearing for 2025 through 2029.
We need to approve. I'll make a motion for the approvals for Railroad Days as presented by Jordan.
Motion by John, second by Mary Jo to approve the, the request for city involvement in motion for Railroad Days. Is there any more discussion on that? Hearing now, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Move on to consider scheduling a public hearing for 2025 through 2029 capital improvement plan.
August 13th, 8:02 PM.
Sounds good.
And again, if anybody has questions on CIP, give me a call, let me know. Go through it in more detail again.
Do we, we just need to have consensus agree on that?
No, just shake some action to schedule it.
So we have a motion to, so moved.
Second.
Motion by Mary, second by Blake to schedule the public hearing as described. Any discussion? Hearing now, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. All right. We'll move on to our annual question. Consider not waiving the monetary limits on statutory tort liability or insurance coverage.
Pretty sure if you look at the form, the league practically fills the box in for you to not waive. So that would be our recommendation.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Roy, was that you, John? Second by John. Is there any discussion or questions about that? Hearing now, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Consider the first reading of ordinance 549 regarding the sale of property.
In your packet is a copy of the ordinance. According to our charter, when, you know, prior to the city selling or disposing of any property, they have to do it by ordinance. So in the case of first addition to Valley View Neighborhood, which we just recently approved the final plat of, this is basically the legal description of those 10 new lots up there that we would be making available for sale and so on, to give the ordinance its first reading. And then on the 13th, we'll do a second reading. And then at that point, you know, even if it's five years from now and, and we have a buyer for one of those lots, we don't have to go through an ordinance process. So I would recommend the first reading of ordinance 549.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Roy, second by Mary. To consider first reading of ordinance 549, any discussion? Questions? Hearing now, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. All right, move this on to item 11. Consider a purchase agreement for Lot 1, Block 2, first addition to Valley View Neighborhood.
In your packet, there's a copy of an email that I received from Don Solga. He is the gentleman that I indicated had interest in Lot 1, Block 2, a first addition to Valley View Neighborhood. That's a sizable lot that does have over 8,000 square feet of delineated wetland on it. And Mr. Solga is proposing the 70 cents per square foot, which the council set as a purchase price for the usable ground. Included some fine artwork. The pink line is where the wetland line is. And the total purchase price then for that lot would be at $19,650. And also do have a proposed purchase agreement in there for that dollar amount. I would recommend moving forward with that. So moved.
Motion by John, second by Mary Jo. Is there any discussion? Hearing now, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Move on to consider approval of Second Amendment of Declaration of Easement, covenants, conditions, restrictions, and reservations for Valley View Neighborhood common interest.
Can you read that again? Okay, very complicated title, very simple in what it actually does. So the, in the, the Hive View Estates, the initial plat where you have those duplex lots along there, there was all, that was a common interest community that included the duplex lots to the west of the road and the ones along that cul-de-sac. With the final plat of the first addition to Hive View Estates, we got rid of the duplex lots to the east side there. And so this basically removes those in the outlaw from the common interest community. So I highly recommend you approve that.
I'll make the motion to approve that.
I'll second.
Motion by Mary, second by John. Is there any discussion or questions? Hearing now, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Move on to consider approval of outdoor event requests for August, on August 15th, 2025.
Included in your packet is an outdoor event request form. Dina Iverson is here, is required for these requests. Her property is down at 523 Fourth Street. Nice letter about what they wanna do. And I printed off a little map showing where the property is, so. Basically, they're requesting a waiver of the noise ordinance for that two hour period when the band is there. Have you talked to any of your neighbors by chance to see what they have?
Yes, I have. In fact, one comes to our gathering. The one across the street has offered their yard for extra campers for this year. I was over there, they have eggs, chickens, so we get eggs from them. And I invited them over there, new to the neighborhood. So I asked, she's like, you have the party every year, right? And I went, yeah. I said, you guys are more than welcome to come. And she says, well, you can put some campers in our yard if you need it. I said, oh, that'd be awesome, so. So the immediate, the two right by us, yes, we have, yeah.
This isn't till 2025?
Yeah, we couldn't get the band. He, he is actually Derek Jones. He's Midwest country music organization Band of the Year, so he was booked for this year. And he put a thing on Facebook that he'll do private parties. And I was like, we've gone to see them at Lakes Jam and Too Tall Tavern, so big fan. And when he mentioned he does private outdoor parties, I was like, are you kidding me? So I got in touch with him and asked him, you know, what, how, what his cost was and, you know, what I needed to do to get it done. And then I said, well, I'm in the city limits, I'm pretty sure I gotta go see what the rules are there, so. And, yeah, it's just a group of people, our friends and family. We have them come from Park Rapids down to Railroad Days every year. And we get together and just have, you know, yard games and potluck and have a good time. And so we thought it would be fun to have some entertainment one year just to pay back for our guests for coming every year, 'cause we have so much fun. And it's also be our anniversary, 41 anniversary. anniversary, forty-one anniversary next year. So it would have been nice for this year, but since he was booked, we had to go for a year later.
So if we approve, if we approve this, do we get invited?
Well, of course. We're always love, more, more people that burn faster, better. We might have to come walk some streets next year, though, or the year after. I'm not asking for any this year because we're just going to be the, the usual people that come. But, but of course.
The longest ordinance is ten, isn't it? Is that what it is?
It's really any time that it would be disruptive, but we enforce it more after ten.
Do we, she's requesting two hours between six and ten. We need to delineate that, or do we just approve that it will be two hours during that time? Is that what it was?
Yeah, so.
Does it matter?
We picked Friday, so it wouldn't interfere with the Railroad Days dance that usually is on Saturdays. And so evening, you know, but so the guests could get there. So we're flexible. I haven't talked to Derek yet on what time, but I'm sure he's flexible, too. Six to eight. He, he plays for two hours. So sixty-eight, seven to nine, whatever.
Letter in there said ideally seven to nine.
Yeah, then in case he, you know, was generous and plays an extra half hour.
Do you see an issue missing?
I'll make a motion for the approval of your outdoor event request.
Second.
Motion by John, second by Blake.
Thank you. It's gonna be fun.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Thank you. Do I need anything at all, like for next year or something? Or just tell Derek it's a go?
You plan way further out tonight.
I'm a planner, I'm a planner. Well, thank you. I appreciate it.
Thanks for coming, Deana. We'll move on to consider approval of Resolution nineteen fifty-nine, accepting a donation.
Received a donation from the John Nelson Memorial Fund. And John, as you know, is a long time Fire Department member. So donating nine hundred and fifty dollars to go towards Fire Department equipment.
I'll make a motion to accept that generous gift to the Fire Department for their equipment.
I'll second.
Motion by Mary, second by John.
This is a straight-up donation, right?
Right.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. That moves us to the next item of business, which is to consider approval of a separation, of separation agreement.
Copy of the separation agreement is included in the packet, basically between the city of Staples and Ron Case. You heard Chief Larson indicate Ron is retiring. And this separation agreement kind of seals that and recommend approval and want to thank Ron for twenty years of service in the city of Staples.
So moved. Second.
You have a motion by Roy, but I'm not sure on the second.
All of us.
Blake. Motion by Roy, second by Blake. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. All right. Well, it brings us to committee reports, and we have one this evening, Planning and Zoning Commission.
Planning and Zoning Commission met on Monday, the fifteenth. Really, the topic of the conversation at, at P&amp;Z was sign ordinance related. Colleen Frost had come, and she's got some ideas of things that she would like to do on her building that, that would not be allowed under current language within our sign ordinance. But the discussion was not just about her project. That sign ordinance was put in place about fifteen years ago. Sign technology obviously has changed a lot in that timeframe. You know, there's, there's certain things in the sign ordinance that we kind of, like, I wonder why it's like that. You know, you can, you can have a dynamic display, two-sided dynamic display sign on a post, but you can't put one on the wall of a building. So, anyway, Planning and Zoning is going to kind of take a look at if we want to ultimately recommend any changes to the sign ordinance and whether or not, you know, we end up with something that makes Colleen's vision workable or not. You know, no guarantees there, but probably good to take a look at it as a whole. So that was pretty much it. So we're going to send information out to the Planning and Zoning members.
Any other questions, Bureau? If not, we'll move on to open forum. Anybody here would like to speak for a forum? All right. We'll move on to city administrative report.
Just a few items to update the council on. We continue to work with IBW and AFSCME on our restructure, stuff within our Public Works Department. And ultimately, we'll present probably a couple memorandum of understandings rather than redo entire labor agreements at this point related to that. But that's still in the works. Did have a meeting with a couple representatives from Rural Development talking about, you know, funding for the clean water side of our street projects. And have sent them a pile of financial data and, you know, affordability type data to see if we qualify for any of the programs that they have as a way to pick up the piece that the drinking water through PFA didn't, so that we can move forward with comprehensive projects, both on Forest Street and on the south side. So we're hoping to hear, you know, they were initially going to kind of get back to us on eligibility stuff, broadly speaking, this week. Whether that happens, we'll see. Should, should be fairly quick. Department Head meeting this morning, spent a lot of time talking about Railroad Days. Just want to make sure that we've got stuff ready to help Discover Staples and the Chamber get everything to run smoothly and safely all weekend. National Night Out will be August sixth, and we're hosting it out at the airport. Staples Motley Beyond Poverty is coordinating that. And we're doing it at the airport because we do anticipate having some aircraft and easier to land at the airport than at MP Park. And then just a reminder, our next meeting is at eight oh one on August thirteenth, after the primary elections. That's all I have. Any questions, Dean?
I move that major.
Second. Motion by Roy, second by Mary to adjourn. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.